Okay, before we start our 7:00 PM meeting, I want to just say that we just finished our closed session and there are no reportable items, though we may be resuming closed session after our open session meeting. And so with that, I will, good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. This is our Tuesday, June 17th, 7:00 PM regular meeting. Please be advised that there are assisted listening devices on the table at the back of the room for anyone who wishes to use them, and our city clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Hoxey.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
And Mayor Mulcany.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is to adopt our agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Mayor, the staff has no proposed changes to the agenda.
If not, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
Move we adopt the agenda?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. That takes us to item D1, which is our Items for the Good of the City, and this is a very enjoyable item for us. We have a report from the Arinda Historical Society from Allison Burns. And this is a particularly, I think, significant time for us to get the report from the Arinda Historical Society as Arinda is about to celebrate its 40th anniversary. And so thank you, thank you so much for being here, Ms. Burns.
It's out, and I can see where they are. They're sitting on the dining room table. So I'm gonna make it up now as I go along. Anyway, I always, it always makes me laugh when I see that it says "for the good of the city," because, thank you very much, I mean, I do feel that we are good for the city, I hope, and so I think that's such a lovely heading to be under. So I'm gonna try and tell you what I remember that I wrote, all the things that we have done. What I do want to say, I just want to thank the board. There's only 10 of us that run the Historical Society. In fact, I think there's only nine now, one's just retired. So, and when I first moved to Arinda, which I had never heard of, and it just stuck a pin in a mat, and I thought, well, I'll join the Historical Society, because I'd been in one before, and so I sort of thought, oh my gosh, and they had newspaper all over the window, there's nothing, it had just died, and I thought, well, what I'll do is I'll be, I'll sort of take people around and be a docent, and then after a couple of years, I'll have a palace revolution and I'll, I'll be running it. But when I went in and I went into the board meeting and they wanted me to join the board, and I said, well, what do you have to do, because I don't know Arinda, I don't know California, and they said, you just need a pulse. So anyway, here I am with my pulse, running it. But it's not, what I want to say is, it's not just me, I mean, it was at first, but now I have these amazing people, they're so clever and enthusiastic and talented and they know everything, and I just need to thank them because they are so good, and I won't, I did write all their names, everybody's names down, but I'm bound to trip up on them, so I won't say those. And so this is what we've been doing, we've just got better and better because of this team that I've got, and they really know what they're doing. So we've come back to, so I took over pretty much at the beginning of lockdown, and so we didn't do anything for a couple, well, we didn't come out for a couple of years, we were inside beavering away. And so we've now started our outreach education programs again, and the schools, and this year, the two people in, that we have are, that do schools mostly, are Kay and Lori, and they've been taking Glorieta kids around, the entire third grade, they've gone for their downtown walks, which is really nice, and it's always good, it's always good to get kids, and then they get home and they talk to their parents, and then the parents come and see us. And then we've been doing school reunion groups, so Miramonte, class of 1969, and Miramonte, there was another class, where have I got that, 64 came along last September, and Vivian, who is so good at getting all the paperwork together, she made a new mirador magazine newsletter for them, so that they all come. So this is something that we really would like to do, we'd like to get more, you know, every time there's a reunion of one of the schools here, for them, you know, just for them to ask us if we could help, and we will, we'll just pull everything out, and we'll make little newspapers for them, and we'll just help them however they want to be helped, because it's always fun. And so community events that we've been involved in, we were at the Wagner Ranch Nature Area Open House last October, I don't know if you remember that, but I think it was about 96 degrees or something, it was terrible, and, but it's fun, and just weren't many people there. And we've also, we did the Glorieta Fun Fest, that was the absolute opposite, because it was really cold, and then we did the trunk or treat. So we do, we try and get involved in everything that's going on, so that just that we sort of get out there. What we are doing, that we're in the middle of helping with now, is the 40th anniversary, and so we've been talking with Linda Smith and with Sherry as well, and we've been getting lots of work together and documents and newspapers and things, and we're going to do, Sherry knows more about this than I do, I think, but big displays when you're having the ice cream social, so we'll have a lot of stuff there for you. And our windows, we always like doing our windows, and we like, there's a woman who works in the library, and she tells everybody to come down and look at our windows, which is a really nice thing. Then we worked with the Maraga and the Lafayette Historical Societies, they were hosting a genealogical event a couple of months ago, and we went along to that as well. And in fact, Nancy, our treasurer, who is sitting there, she found in, we have a very small storage facility in Maraga, she actually found this 17th century sampler, there's a little girl, an 11-year-old girl, who is actually the, she's related to the miners, she was the grandmother at the time, she was only 11, and found this, and Nancy had it all framed, and it's beautiful, so you must come in and see us there, and see it, it's on the wall now. The newsletter, I finally got around to writing, so our newsletter tells you everything that we are doing, everything we've done, it'll tell you what grants we got, and one of the grants in particular was one that we got to do a plaque at the Arinda Motors, and I'm sorry, that's my phone, you can hear. We, so we've got this plaque, so next time you're walking or driving past the Arinda Motors, have a look at this, because it shows you, it's pretty much the only building actually in Arinda that's still standing, and as it was, so that's, it's 100 years old now. So what else? We've changed our opening hours, and for anybody who doesn't even know where we are, we're right next to the Arinda Association, and we were open two days a week, we, because we don't have enough volunteers, we're making it just Saturday mornings from 11 to 1:00. But anybody, you know, if you want to talk to us and come and see us or anything else, we'll come down and we'll talk to you, you know, we're there whenever you ask, really, by arrangement. We've been doing a lot of digitization and preservation, so we've had the Arinda Sun Newspapers done, and they're online, and we got grants from California Revealed to help us finance that. And so if you go into our website, arindahistory.org, you can just hit on, forgotten the button, but anyway, it says, it tells you to hit on this button, and you'll be able to see everything, and it's wonderful looking at all these old newspapers, I mean, they're not that old, they're 40s, mid 40s to the early 70s, but just looking at ads, adverts, and house prices is fascinating, and you can do all this at home now. We have finally got some decent equipment, this is also a grant, recording equipment, so that we can do more archiving, more, trying to think of the word, oral histories, and in the newsletter here, it'll tell you some of our oral histories. We've got some software grants, we've managed to get a new scanner, software upgrades, an email contact system, all of these things that we've done. And we are working with the theater, and so if you're one of our members, you get, you can have a two-for-one, go and see the movies. And that's about all we've done so far. We're getting, you know, now we're getting a little bit more money coming in, in grants, we can get our website refreshed, we can start recording for our oral history program, we can do more digitization, and, but our big thing, I guess, this year is so far, this summer, is going to be helping with the 40th anniversary. The other thing, I don't know if you've ever been to our little train station, which is actually owned by the city, but we're the ones that take people around, it's, it sort of has got a little bit dusty and nobody gets into it very much. So we're going to, this is one of the things that we want to do this year, we want to try and refresh it. Anybody that has, if you have anything, I mean, so it was built in about the 18, mid 1890s, didn't last long, but we want to really turn that into a train station properly, like it used to be, make it authentic, so if anybody has anything in their attics that you think, obviously you're not gonna have 1890s stuff, but you know, anything that looks good, we would really like to get that open. So if I had my poppin' notes, I could say a lot more, but I can't remember everything, all the things I was gonna talk about. But I do want to thank the city very much, because you help us enormously, and Todd, there he is, is very kind to us, and Steve and Ross, whenever we ask for anything, they do do it quickly, they come and they send Mark or Antonio, and they come and put pictures up for us and they do things, and then I go home and I make cakes, and I take the cakes in, and they know that next time, so it's a good, good barter system. So thank you very much for supporting us always, and do come and see us, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Allison, thank you incredibly for all the work that you're doing around the 40th anniversary. I don't know if our liaison, Councilmember Riley, wants to say anything, or our city manager?
Well, first of all, I'm relatively new here, and I've had an opportunity to sit down with Allison and talk about the 40th anniversary, and just so impressed with the work that the Historical Society, I'm sure they're not using the right terms, is working on with respect to that program, and then just everything that they're doing in the community to support education and the history of this wonderful place.
Yeah, I'm really excited to see the panels, and we got a little preview of what you're looking at.
I just want to say congratulations on all those grants, you don't hear that every day, and you've been able to really make something out of, you know, make a lot of progress in those different areas.
We've got people who are good at grants, because I know nothing about grants either, so, but no, Theresa Long particularly is very good at getting grants, so it's just everybody has their strengths, and it's amazing how it was sort of just me to begin with, and Sora Doherty, you know, she used to call it the Allison Society, because it was only me, but now all these people are so, everybody's so good at what they do, and Nancy is really good at tidying the place up, and more than that, sorry, but, you know, and then just the others, everybody does what they're good at, and so I get some of the glory of it, but it's not, you know, I'm not doing so much now.
Obviously, you get some credit for bringing out all their talents, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, just.
Just thank you, Allison.
Okay, thanks.
And thank you, Nancy, and thank you, please tell your entire board.
Yes.
Like, the work you do, I mean, just recognizing local history and helping us all understand where we've been helps us know where we're going, and, you know, right now, I think history is very, very important, so thank you.
Just one.
Yeah. Please keep touring the third graders, because every Arinda kid I know remembers their third grade tour, so really encourage you to please keep, keep that up, it's a wonderful tradition.
Thank you. Okay. And we look forward to seeing you on July 1st. Next on our agenda is our public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda if the speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council under public forum? I see none, and we have no speaker cards, correct?
No speaker cards, just one written communication received that's before you and on the back table.
Yes, we got in our pack communications from the public, we have one public forum comment from Nick Warnoff. So I will, with that, I will close public forum, that takes us to item F on tonight's agenda, which is our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acting on in one motion, unless a council member, a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Does anyone want to remove any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as proposed, which is items F1 through F6?
A move we adopt?
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And that takes us to our public hearing. Our public hearing matter tonight is approval of the master fee schedule, and the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2225, approving the master fee schedule. So I will now ask our city manager for the introduction presentation.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Doug Alessio, Assistant City Manager, will be providing you a brief oral update on the master fee schedule.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Doug Alessio, the Assistant City Manager. The item before you tonight is the approval of the master fee schedule. So at least annually, where circumstances and costs for providing services to mitigate the increase in cost of finding services, the city reviews and adjusts fees that are included on the city's master fee schedule, the adjustments are made at a notice public hearing pursuant to state law. Most of the fees in the schedule were last adjusted in July of 2024, the one exception is the regional transportation impact fee, that gets adjusted on January 1st of each year, I'll talk a little bit more about that later in the staff report. So being presented to you is a redline version of the fee schedule for comparison purposes, the comparison shows the current fee, the proposed fee, there's also a column that provides a notation as to how the adjustment was made, most of the adjustments are made pursuant to CPI. CPI that we're using is the February 24 to 25 Consumer Price Index was 2.7% increase. The other items that changed, or did indicate no change or new fee, et cetera, the staff report focused on the 15 items, which were not adjustments by CPI. There were no changes other than CPI adjustments for park and rec or the police department in many sections. In administration, we had a couple of adjustments, and most of them were related to copy services, we increased our fees for color copies, black and white copies, we discontinued offering large format copies, because we don't have a large format copier anymore, and then there's a fee associated with copying architectural drawings. There's other fees in the planning section that changed, our plan director, LaShawn Cross, is available if you want to discuss any of those changes. Other than that, we incorporated the December, actually January 2025 Regional Transportation Fee into the fee schedule, we do that every January regardless administratively, because the fee authority, they adopt their fee, we're just listing it in our schedule. The other adjustment is our park dedication fee, the city's ordinance dictates that the fees tied to the cost of housing, and that we use the Cost Association of Realtors published on their website data, and the year-over-year data showed a decrease in the estimated average cost of homes in Arinda, so the fee is going down slightly this year, so that is not typical, but it does happen. So those are all the changes that are in the fee schedule. If you adopt Resolution 2225 approving the fee schedule, the general fees would go into effect on July 1st, and the business, except for the business registration fees, those will be effective for registrations due after December 31st, 2025 is when those will go up. And then in accordance with state law, the park dedication fee will take effect in 60 days, and we will be coming in January 2026, updating our fee schedule again automatically with the regional transportation increase. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
So do we have councilmember questions?
Yes. I have a question. So do we always use the same fee schedule, or does the city have any ability to have new fees, or how would we decide that?
Some of these are new, so if you go down the schedule, you'll see that there's a new item or two, the fee for the architectural renderings is a new fee, so they're added from time to time. This year, we didn't add many, we haven't done a formal fee study for some time, we're planning on doing one of those shortly, so next time we do this, there may be different fees or new fees added. We have the ability to do that at any time, it doesn't have to happen at the annual fee scheduled adoption, if there's a fee that we should be charging, we can at any time bring that and get it before council and adopt it, and amend the fee schedule any time during the year, if there's a fee that you want to start charging or stop charging, so.
I don't have any sense, do you have a sense of whether the fees we charge are in line with the fees of our neighboring communities?
Well, the fees are actually designed to recover the cost of providing the service, and sometimes that varies tremendously from community to community.
Okay. Other questions, councilmember questions? Councilmember G.
I was just curious whether you really got to take a look at our public comment about the fees, and again, it's kind of along the same questioning of, you know, we're missing opportunities, or we should have more fees, or, do you have any other thoughts about what we received in the way of public comment?
I'll try and address that, so I have looked at the email that the council received, you know, the point, I think, is when you, for example, with the housing element update, we're probably having what would be described as the potential largest increase in population resulting from that new unit count. At that point in time, and we've talked about this internally, would it make sense for us to just evaluate what impact to services that might have on the community, and specifically on either our needs long-term to hire more staff or have more space for more staff, and in doing that, we could potentially come back to you with a master plan and update public facility fees, so that we could try to modify or expand space that we currently have to accommodate the need for future growth. So that's something that we need to talk about, and obviously, we will come back and talk to the council if we think that that's a way to move forward, but, you know, if you're adopting housing element sites to the tune of 1,300 units, that could have an impact of a few, couple thousand to up to 3,000 new people in your community long-term, and so what impact does that have on your facility? So we will definitely take a look at it, at this point, we don't have any recommendation as to whether or not we should move forward, that we have to talk internally about what we think the impact of having that new population might have on police services and/or on city staff or parks and rec staff.
Thank you. Other councilmember questions?
Good follow-up. How does the sort of chicken and egg timing work of those, because you, it seems premature to impose a bunch of presumptive fees on development that hasn't happened yet, but then after the development has happened, you've missed the opportunity to charge? What do you anticipate in terms of the process?
So we would determine, and we would talk internally about whether or not we think that new populations coming as a result of the zoning changes that are required for the housing element would result in more service needs for the community, and that could come in the form of staff or employees, at which point, we would determine, do we need more space for those people, or do we have, can we accommodate them in the space we have? If we need more space for them, we would, we would have to create a document that would justify that we would need more space, or we need to modify space to accommodate them, at which point, we could then use that to tear off of and develop a fee, what we could term a public facility fee, for example, and then that public facility fee could then be applied to new development for their fair share of the impact of having that new service level or service slash employee that would be required. And so it's not entirely clear to me that there would be an overwhelming impact that we would change, and, you know, add a ton of employees or add a ton of police services as a result of that, we would, some of it has to do with geography, you know, anticipated calls for service, you know, we would do, we would do some sort of analysis to determine whether or not we need more staff to accommodate future populations, and then we would build a fee around accommodating that staff and space.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I follow up on that too?
Sure.
You mentioned a study that would, that could be done to update our fees, could the study also explore this area?
Typically, no, a user fee study is really about the cost of providing current services in the city, so Doug could talk a little bit about.
Not anticipated.
Impact, it's not impact-related, it's really about.
There's two basic sets of fees, development impact fees and then general fees, so a big part of the fee schedule talks about general fees, and those aren't development impact fees, those are fees for services or charges, they're intended to recover the cost of providing services to people that isn't a general service that the public might need, a lot of it has to do with planning, but there's certain areas like photocopies and a number of other things. Fees, the user study would determine what actually costs us to do those things. For years, we've just done adjustment based on CPI, and at some point, you usually would want to refresh that with a study, the way the city's been structured, our staffing, the way we do things is changed from when these originally developed, so you'd want to do that regularly. That's completely different, separate from development impact fees, those are usually the process. are usually the process that Linda described, where you're looking and if you're going to have substantial development, that's going to impact traffic flows, your, your infrastructure, you, you create a fee to help mitigate those costs and have those developments pay their share of those increased capacity, facility capacities. So whether that's storm drain or roads or facilities or, or whatnot. So.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And those are usually very specific to that topic. This, you do a study, right? If what you're concerned about is buildings, we have enough space for the employees. No, it won't pay for the employees or anything like that, obviously.
Thank you. That was along the lines of one of my questions, too. So. Any additional questions from council members? If there's no additional council member questions, I'm going to open the public hearing and take any public comments. Are there any members of the public to give public comment? Seeing none, and we have no speaker cards, I'll just note for the record that we got a written public comment on this item from Nick Warnock. I will then close public hearing and bring this matter back to the council for discussion and adoption of the item or further direction, if any. So we have been asked to adopt Resolution 2225 approving the master fee schedule. Any discussion on that?
I'm happy to move approval of Resolution 22-25 approving the master fee schedule.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Assistant City Manager, for that presentation. Item H is policy matters. There's no policy matters this evening. So that takes us to item I, which is council members' reports. So do we have any reports? I know that we had a two-by-two last night.
Yeah, I'm happy to start with that. Last night, we had the two-by-two subcommittee with our MOFD colleagues. We were all in attendance. We had a reasonable amount of public attendance. The key topics, Chief Isaacs gave us an update on the State Forestry Department's draft regulations regarding Zone Zero, which are now out for public comment. I didn't look today. He was going to put a link to the document on the MOFD website, but I'm sure it's also on the forestry website. So there's probably a 45-day period where they're going to be receiving public comments and agency comments and comments from everyone. So obviously, it's a pretty important topic for all of us. So if you'd like to take a look, it should be available on the web. We also got an update on the regular annual enforcement, which MOFD is busy with. They have a meeting, I believe, tomorrow evening in which they're looking at budget items to continue to add funding to their incentive programs with the home hardening issues of the vent mesh and the gutter guards. They're also looking at funding additional inspectors. So those were all positive things. The mayor gave a good recap about the briefing of the meeting with Senator Grayson. So I'll let you talk more about that. And, and then we kind of had our usual updates about, you know, things that are in progress right now with work that's being done. As we've all seen, there's maintenance work being done on the fuel breaks and some prescribed burns. We talked about the Arinda Oaks area. So the city manager or the mayor may have more comments on that as to that possibility. But it was a, it was a pretty good discussion. And we set our next meeting for August 25th.
Thank you.
I'll let you add some.
No, I don't. In terms of the May 30 event hosted here with Senator Grayson, we, I gave a report on that at our last meeting, so I don't need to repeat that. And I'll let our city manager talk in her report about Arinda Oaks Park. And the only thing I wanted to say is, is any other council member reports, first of all?
One thing briefly is that our student coming from the Czech Republic's visa is being held up by the Trump student visa prohibition that's going on right now. And we're trying to figure out if there's some way around that. The student's been selected. There's a host family selected. Everyone's ready to go, except there's no visa for her. So if anyone has any brilliant ideas about what we could do to get some help with that, that would be great. I know that the committee's reached out to Mark D'Sonius's office and Adam Schiff's office and all sorts of other people of that nature. But I don't know if...
I'm wondering if this, this, has the city written a letter?
I don't think I've asked the city to write a letter. I don't know who they've written a letter to.
I was, I'm just learning that this is happening. I know they were worried about it anticipatorily. And I said, reach out to our congressman's office if, if that's the case. But if there's anything that the city can do, I.
Well, I can talk with Mark, with Councilmember Hoxsey and see.
Yeah.
What efforts have been underway and whether or not there's anything we could do to support those efforts to try and get him or her here.
Such a lovely tradition. That would be.
It would be awful. It'd be the first year in 25 years that we haven't had a student. So we don't want that to happen. So anyways, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. I just heard about it yesterday.
Yeah, I do wonder if there's any.
I can check in.
Public sentiment, you know, expressions of public sentiment.
That could be expressed. I appreciate that.
That could help move things along.
Is it's different than a college student visa, obviously. It's a high school student.
Right.
And so it's just being kind of swept up in that whole category of student visa, which is unfortunate.
That is unfortunate.
Just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
And anything in terms of the school two-by-twos or any other committees that we want to?
We haven't had a two-by-two since before the end of the school year. And now the school year is, is over, of course. So I don't think there's anything new.
I'm into the infrastructure.
Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
So we also last week had our infrastructure subcommittee. So our public works director was kind enough to give us an update on the storm drain mapping. And we talked a little bit and brainstormed a little bit about getting additional participation and, in the community in terms of people agreeing to let people on their property if that was needed. So that was a topic of discussion, and we had some action items there that staff was going to try to implement, I think, to maybe make a little bit more outreach in terms of what that is all about. And then we, the other main topic that we had was, we had Dave Metz from FM3 there to talk about the draft questionnaire that we're planning to try very hard to get a lot of participation from our folks that live on private roads to answer, so that we'll have more data in terms of possible, possible input in terms of, you know, what, what would be helpful to them and what their thoughts are. So we did go over that. There was a cadre of, you know, very involved citizens there to help review the questions. Not everybody was there, but we got quite a bit of feedback. And I think, I think quite pleasantly, there seemed to be a fair amount of good feeling about the questionnaire. Maybe not 100%, but...
Not 100%.
But I think we got a fair amount of good input. And I think we got a general sense that there was satisfaction in doing it and kind of how it was structured. So those were our two main topics.
And, and what we really need is help getting the word out on both the storm drain survey as well as this questionnaire when it goes out. One thing, the Arinda Living Magazine is having the current mayor write a column or a little article, which I know, I think is something that Councilmember G I understood, was involved with getting, getting started. And it's usually feel-good, items for the good of the city type items that get discussed. And so at the very end of this, the last column I wrote was right after our infrastructure committee meeting. So I put in the link for the storm drain survey and encourage people to, to do that. But, and then just in terms of, are you going to give a little bit of legislative update? I just wanted to know. I know we've had a lot of questions about SB 79 because it moved from the House to the Assembly with amendments. And we have, Arinda has submitted a letter of opposition already. So I wanted everyone to know that.
And.
You want me to talk about an hour during my, let me know when you want me to. No, I, if there's any other council member reports. Okay. Then we will move to city manager's report.
Great. Okay. So just a few quick updates. City Hall will be closed this Thursday. It's Juneteenth. And of course, we are closed on the every other Friday, which also happens to be the day after. So City Hall will be closed from Thursday through Sunday. Next week, Opera in the Park is occurring on the 26th. So if you would like to come out, all the residents of Arinda, come out and support Opera in the Park. Paving work is getting started in earnest throughout the city. So you probably see some of that activity as you drive around town. Earlier, earlier today, there was a prescribed burn in North Arinda that helped to conduct some fuel mitigation work and went very well. We have been in discussions with MOFD, and it was mentioned at the two-by-two meeting last night that there is a desire to also conduct a prescribed burn at Arinda Oaks, which is something that I am supportive of, working with the chief, to really get those fuels down to a very small amount of fuel left in areas that are very important. And it'll create an additional barrier around the 100-foot perimeter. So we think it's a great idea. Once that date becomes more formal, we will, of course, put out significant notice to the neighborhood to keep their windows and doors shut during that prescribed burn. But we're really excited about the idea that we can get those fuels even further down in that area. In fuel mitigation work, we are almost complete with the city's work. We are finishing up on Brookwood Road, some of the fuel mitigation work. And I know that the neighbors are out there watching what's happening. And we're trying to be very careful this time and trying to meet obligations that MOSD has set for us, but not try to overdo it so that we can create enough screening for them. And I think they've taken a first stab at it. I would say whack, but I know that's not the right term. First whack at it at, out in that area. And it looks like they're trying to be very cautious in removing all the vegetation out there. So trying to meet the residents as best we can with, what they'd like to see. And then just a quick update on SB 79. SB 79 is now in the Assembly. We, of course, have submitted our opposition letters to our Assembly member, Rebecca Bauer-Kahen, in addition to our opposition in the Senate. And it's being referred to Housing and Community Development as the next committee. And we will, of course, be submitting our letter of opposition to that committee portal as well. That's the update. I don't think anything changed. There was an amendment done yesterday, but it doesn't look like it's a material amendment to actually any of the terms of SB 79.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Is there any reason to meet with Rebecca Bauer-Kahen's office to talk about our specific concerns to see if she would propose an amendment?
I don't know if we can get in discussion at this point.
No.
We can't. I, I'll let you know that I am trying to reach out to her office. Okay?
Thank you. And communicate, and we, opposition was communicated, you know, verbally and in writing as well, too, previously. Anything else?
That's it for me.
That moves us to matters initiated. Are there any matters initiated tonight? Okay. I had one that I wanted to raise, which is with the Zone Zero regulations being in place, it occurred to me that Councilmember G and I have had the opportunity of hearing presentations about the Zone Zero regulations that are two-by-two. I'm just raising whether other council members, whether, whether it's a subject that we might want to try to bring to the full council. It would, I think, only make sense to do that if we had the ability or time to do it during the 45-day comment period. So that would probably have to come to us at either our, you know, later July meeting, mid or later July meeting.
Our July 15th meeting.
Yeah, or the one after that. But ideally by.
The next meeting is late August.
Okay. So it would have to be by July, the July 15th meetings. I don't know what else. We have an agenda. It's sort of a soft ask rather than a hard ask. And I just want to hear if others are interested. Because it will have a big impact on our community. It's more of an information piece, I think. Of course, we could submit comment, but it's not, you know, it's not our ordinance, right?
So as a reminder, during plating, matter initiated, it should be phrased as, I move that we bring this back on the 15th. Then there's a second, but there's no discussion.
Okay. As to whether or not to bring it back.
Exactly.
That's right. Sorry. Forgot about that.
And what are you moving? Moving that we can revise the regulations?
That we have a staff presentation or Chief Isaacs' presentation. How, I would leave it up to staff. We have a, we have a presentation on Zone Zero.
And then we would.
On the July 15th meeting to the full council.
Then we would comment?
Just an, it would be, it's, the presentation is an information, an update, simply an update on the state regulations, where they're at, what's, what's.
Didn't the city attorney just say that we can only decide on the 15th if we want it to come back, which means we can't hear it until later?
No, no. Tonight, if there's a motion and a second, then the, the council can vote, if you'd like, on the 15th to have an item to discuss, yeah, receive an update and discuss potential comments on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you comment?
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second. Okay. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So that passes.
Good idea.
Any other matters initiated? Okay. That takes us back into closed session. And item L1 is the city attorney performance evaluation, I think. Did we want to, were we resuming that? Are we done with that?
It's, I think. My recommendation is that you announce both the items.
Okay.
So the first is the city attorney evaluation, and the second is.
Conference with labor negotiators.
Labor negotiators. And the two labor negotiators selected by the council, I believe, are the mayor and vice mayor.
Correct.
Okay. So then if, and the third item, we do not need further closed session discussion. The council completed its discussion. So if there's any public comment, this would be the time.
And I see no members of the public here, and we have received no speaker cards. So I will close public comment on our closed session for those two items. Thank you, city attorney. And we will move into closed, resume our closed session. Thank you.